All right, 6:03 PM, so I'm calling to order a Thursday, October 19th, 2023, regular meeting of the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tantalus Neighborhood Board. Our first item on the agenda is the City and County of Honolulu Monthly Reports, starting with the Honolulu Fire Department. Are you here with us this evening?
Yes. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you fine. Thanks for joining us.
My name is Captain Michael Chan. I'm from the Makiki Fire Station. Couple of things, I'm gonna go read over the statistics for September, and then give the safety tips for the month. For the month of September, incident calls for September 2023. Structure fires five, wildland brush fires one, nuisance calls four, cooking fires three, activated alarm with no fire seven. Okay, for emergencies, medical, we have 179 motor vehicle collisions, two. Motor vehicle crashes and collisions with pedestrians, eight. Mountain resources, one, and then no ocean rescues, no hazardous material incidents. For the month of October, everybody knows is fire prevention month. National Fire Protection Association sponsors Fire Prevention Week. That runs from October 8th to October 14th, 2023. As a national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is cooking safety. Cooking safety starts with you. Pay attention for fire prevention. Some tips, turn pot handles toward the back of the stove, always keep the lid nearby when cooking. If there's a grease fire, slide the lid over the pan or pot, turn off the burner, and then watch what you heat, set a timer to remind you that you're cooking, and have a kid or pit free zone at least three feet around the stove or any area that you're cooking from. Any questions for the month?
Thank you very much for your report. We're gonna start questions with board members. Do any board members have any questions at this time? Seeing none, anyone else in attendance have any questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much for your report. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Over, I'm gonna call up the Honolulu Police Department. Hi, Lieutenant Segusio.
Hello, good evening everyone, and Chair Ross and everyone in attendance, Lieutenant Arnold Segusio, representing the District One Community Area Responsibility. Thank you guys for your time and patience once again, and the information I'm providing to you is the stats for your particular area. If you guys want more specific statistical information, you guys can go to our public website at www.honolulupd.org. Statistical information for the month of September is as follows. Motor vehicle thefts is 15, the previous month was nine. Burglaries, there was a spike, 13, from the previous month it was four. Thefts is 57, previous 38. UNVs or car break-ins is 13, previous month was 15. Assaults were 14, previous month 15. Sex assaults were zero for this month, previous it was three. Graffiti cases is zero, previous was one. Drug offenses were two, previous was four. Total cost of service for the month of September was 2,350. Previous to that, it was 2,519. So we're actually down in cost of service. So I looked into the burglaries, because there was a, it's definitely we hit a breach in regards to the burglaries in the area. Majority of those burglaries are commercial burglaries, and they occurred kinda coinciding with the Pensacola and Pecoy corridor, but below the freeway, so the majority of them are businesses. There were several burglaries reported on the top part, near Makiki, above the freeway. There were residential burgs, and I think there were three for those locations, just in that general area, right there. Other than that, on the other statistical information, there's no other criminal breaches. So in regards to the burglaries, patrol units have been notified, and they know that there was an increase, so they're taking measures. We're taking measures in order to try to curb this stat for October. So the safety tip for the month of October will be of Halloween season in regards to tempered candies and treats. We're asking our community members to be very diligent in checking candy before allowing our Kiki and even ourselves to consume them. Choose homes and neighbors that you folks pretty much know, and/or, you know, go to the major shopping malls that will be having candy handout events for this Halloween. Honolulu Police Department has guidelines and protocols in place for making notification and for the handling of these types of investigations. However, we all know that prevention is the best solution. At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time, so I can take questions from the board and the public attendees.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions from members of the board at this time? I recognize Chuck, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Lieutenant Segusio, you know like Cadillac converters? I know last time, or last couple meetings, we said that it decreased substantially. Has it still been pretty much down?
Yeah, so pretty much for your particular area, it's been zero for about six to seven months, even longer than that. I just can't remember past that. In regards to the new legislation that took effect on January 1st, in regards to these places that purchased those catalytic converters from regular people, it's almost like copper, so they have to sign an affidavit, say where it came from, you know, take a picture, a photo ID, so they have all of that information documented. And if it comes back stolen, then obviously they can be prosecuted. And I think that's what curbed most of the catalytic converter thefts, but they're still going on in particular areas of the island though.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I recognize Hugh at this time, please go ahead.
Hi Lieutenant, thank you so much for your time. You probably know about this already, but just wanted to bring it to your attention again. Some graffiti on Makiki Heights Drive. There's a big retaining wall, I think it's underneath the property of 2059 Keamoku Street. It's like, I think it's like a big house that used to be a farmhouse or something, but it's there's a big retaining wall that faces Makiki Heights Drive, and there's just huge amounts of graffiti. Also, people dump their mattress, there's a, right now there's a mattress, there's a sofa. I reported this to, through the 311 app, I think about a week ago. But I just wanted to get your thoughts on how to handle this, because I think that the retaining wall is part of the private property of 2059 Keamoku. But it's a huge eyesore, I mean, it looks awful, as you probably already know. So what can we do about it?
Pretty much, I'm gonna take care of that for you, Hugh. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna notify my community policing team, because we do have to reach out to the owners for that property. We cannot just go onto his property, or wherever property that is, and just start doing a paintover. We would love to do it, right, because it's the broken window theory, right? If it continues, then people are gonna think that it's pretty much status quo, and they can allow to do that. So I'm gonna notify my community policing team to try to see if they can make contact with, so I just wanna get it correct, yeah, 2059 Keamoku Street, you said?
I believe so, and I mean, yeah. I don't think that the house itself, it's a huge house, but it does not appear to be well-kept. I think that the retaining wall, you know, it's at the bottom of the house, but there's a little opening that I think that people, it used to be an opening so that people could walk up from Makiki Heights Drive up to the house, rather than from Keamoku. But that pathway is all, you know, it's grown over with weeds. I think there used to be a gate, but the doors, the metal gate is, I think, just laying on the ground. And yeah, there's all sorts of trash strewn about in that area. So, yeah, any assistance on that issue would be much appreciated.
I'll definitely go take a look at it. In fact, on my first day back to work, I'm gonna drive up there and try to see what the trash situation looks like. Maybe we can get DFM to go up there for like bulky pickups and stuff like that, like the mattresses and stuff like that. Obviously, with the wildfires in Lahaina and stuff like that, fires are very dangerous thing, especially in Makiki, right? So we've known like these mattresses to, you know, somehow catch on fire, like large rubbish policy catch on fire, so maybe we'll work on the garbage first, and then I'll get my CPT, my community policing team, to take a look at the graffiti.
And while I have you, just in the same area, there's two caves. Again, just right in the same area, on that hill that is, yeah, it's facing Makiki Heights Drive, as you drive up toward the nature center. And now it's very, very clear that there are people living in there, because people are drying out their clothes in the entrance of the cave. So I think that that, for many reasons, sanitary, health, safety, that those caves should be cleared again.
Definitely, we'll go take a look at it, and then we'll go and address some of the parking situations up there too, because definitely we've been getting a lot of parking complaints in that location. So if we take care of the parking, we strike with a small hammer, and then hopefully it affects the big problem, yeah. Maybe we can have these people decide to go to better pastures. Sure.
Lieutenant, we have a next question from Representative Del Alvolati. You're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Lieutenant. I've been having a couple of meetings with members of the Makiki Community Gardens, and they continue to raise some of their main concerns. They find things like used condoms, syringes in their gardens. You know, I've advised them that, you know, they know to call, take pictures and, you know, submit it to 311, but is there anything more that they can do? Or is there any more police presence that could be afforded to that area? Just because we do know that there is some activity going on there at night during park closure hours. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Representative. I'm gonna refer that also to my CPT team, my community policing team, but also refer it to my patrol watch units, yeah. It's kinda difficult now in that one particular area, because we're probably gonna have to reallocate a little bit more of police presence in that location. But I'll see that it happens.
So Lieutenant, I actually have a question for you. I've been hearing some noise complaints for nearby area related to people who aren't putting their, appears to be not putting their batteries back in their fire alarms. And so it seems like in one part of lower Makiki, or potentially lower Manoa, I wasn't quite sure, on the direct street, it's been going on for about a week. Who should people contact if there's an apartment? You're not sure what room, but they know what place, which building that is. Who should they be contacting about for those noise complaints?
It's so ironic, I have a neighbor that has that too, so. For us, we will, you know, just give HPD a contact, and we'll go down there and try to mitigate the problem as best we can. We'll try to find out which unit it's coming from, and then maybe, you know, just knock on the door. I know it's kind of irritating, because it continually beeps, especially in the middle of the night. But yeah, just contact us, I mean, we respond to all types of cases, and that is not something that is not unusual that we respond to. So call us, we'll try to find out what unit it is, we'll make contact with the owner, and maybe even give him a battery.
Great, thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Anyone else in attendance have questions at this time? Well, Lieutenant, thank you so much for taking our concern seriously and giving us prompt answers. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Absolutely, you guys all have a great night.
Next item on the agenda is the Board of Water Supply. Do we have a representative with us this evening?
Hey, good evening. My name is Michelle Harmon, and I'm your representative from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Good evening. So I have one main break to report for you folks. 2345 Mount Alaaha Road, and that was September 9th, and then 10th and 13th, actually. So that location is the only location with a main break to report. I also have some responses from your questions, your previous questions. One of them was regarding a Kinau Street buckling from board member Nakamoto. And that issue was investigated by the Board of Water Supply and turned over to the Department of Facility Maintenance. I had two questions from board member Eric Salassa, and one of them is regarding the Imagine a Day Without Water event that's happening on October 21st. So he asked if we had invited the Navy, and we did not issue a specific invitation to the Navy. But all organizations interested in attending the event, please contact us at the email address contactus@hbws.org, or you can call 808-748-5041. The second question from board member Salassa was regarding Archie Baker Park, and he asked what upgrades were done. So the Honolulu Board of Water Supply replaced and installed new equipment inside the facility at the park to meet current standards. The scope of work included a new altitude valve, replacement of the emergency pumping connections and other equipment. And then the upgrade was done to allow the Honolulu Board of Water Supply to maintain and increase operational flexibility between multiple water systems. And then for my general report for tonight, we just wanted to remind everybody about that event, Imagine a Day Without Water, which actually was celebrated today. But we have a special event on Saturday, October 21st, from 10 to 2. We invite everybody to come and interact with about 15 organizational booths. We'll have activities, games, and lots of arts and crafts. We'll have a rain barrel workshop, a native seed workshop, deer escape plant activity, fishing, and we'll be making genki and seed balls. There's also food and shave ice for purchase. So more information can be found at the Honolulu Board of Water Supply's website, And that's all I have for you tonight, and with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions from board members at this time? Harris, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Ms. Harmon in terms of the follow-up. I really appreciate it. Actually, the Facilities Maintenance Department has come, and they actually repatched the road at this time. So thank you very much for doing the surveillance, and then also handing it off for the road repair, so appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I'm glad we finally got that resolved.
All right, any other questions at this time? Hearing none, thank you very much for your update.
Thank you. See you all next time.
Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the filling of vacancy. We have one vacancy for Sub District One. Logan, have you heard anything of any interest?
Not this month, no.
Okay. Is anyone in attendance interested in joining our board, and who happens to live in the Sub District One, or perhaps doesn't know their Sub District? We could figure it out right now. Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to community reports. The first up is Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Neighborhood Security Watch Report. Do you have a report for us this month?
Yes, Chair. My committee of Dow, Wang, and Matt Teney, and I, we evaluated our initial goal about our approach to Neighborhood Security Watch. And basically, what we wanna do right now is we wanna concentrate on the educational part of it. The educational part being that we going out into the community, especially the condos, letting the residents know, give them, providing safety tips and how to be safe in their condos and residence, as well as out on the streets, and when they're out and about. So what we're gonna, what we wanna do is, there's a bunch of neighborhood security watches within our area already. So what we wanna do is help support and supplement their efforts by being able to go out and spend time with the residents as far as providing those safety tips to them. So we're in the process of doing that. We've already approached or been in contact with several neighborhood security watches within our district. So we're gonna be working more and more with them, and seeing if we can get more presentations in their various sub-districts. And with that, I also wanted to commend Harris for his Neighborhood Security Watch. I'm part of his watch, and he's done a tremendous job as far as getting communication and getting everybody involved in his area. And I'm sure he'd probably say a few things about it, but yeah, so we wanna support people like Harris and some of the others in our area. So we'll be further updating you as time goes on.
Excellent, thank you very much for your work on this. We're gonna move on to the Wahoo Metropolitan Planning Organization. John, do we have an update this month?
They did notify me for the meeting, so I didn't go to the meeting.
Okay, how can we make sure you're looking for it?
We need to hurry, have the neighborhood mission, make sure that.
Logan, is that fault you might be able to do early next week?
You're wanting me to?
I haven't heard of Alvo.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
He gets me there, he gets to send me stuff.
Yeah, I can see how worse than my other boards have. Yeah, Alvo routes, I'm not sure if it's something the board reaches out to, or.
Yeah, when we, 30 years ago, when Alvo started, they were the board of ten, one, founding board, so they're not gonna say it for a long time. They're sort of falling off, so I wanna make sure they should know about it. Get my name on it, please.
Looks like they just sent me an email this week, asking for updated content information. I know they were contacted before. I will forward you that email, John.
Okay, good.
And hopefully that resolves it. John, oh wait, I don't wanna read your email publicly per se. Is it the same one I typically use in the past? As long as you got emails from me before. Okay. All right. We're gonna move on to resident and community concerns. Because assumption law concerns now on the agenda may be presented, but no board actually can be taken, and we limit presentations to three minutes each. Does anyone have anything to share under community concerns and comments at this time? Okay, I don't see any at this time, so I'm actually going to share a brief one. I'm handing things over to Nathan to chair, but I should be well under three minutes on this. Okay, taking off my chairing hat for a moment, putting on my Manoa Lions Club hat, a different role. Everyone is invited to the Manoa Community Christmas Parade, December 9th, 2023, starting at 4:00 PM. The meeting and start location will be Noalani School, and they'll be moving up East Manoa Road and Lowry Avenue to Manoa District Park's upper parking lot. Any group interested in joining should email manoa lions club parade at yahoo.com. Streets on the parking parade route will be closed for the day of the parade. And that is my entire comment for the group, and it's also included in the chat. I'll take back the gavel from Nathan again. Checking one more time if there's any community concerns or comments. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to state-elected official reports, starting with Governor Josh Green's Representative Jai Cunningham.
Aloha, everyone. This is Russell Peng. I am filling in for Jai Cunningham. Actually, I'm taking over for Jai Cunningham, who is no longer with the Department of Transportation. He's returned back to reporting, so you should be seeing him on the news soon. So I am, again, the new Public Information Officer for the Department of Transportation. I've been on the job for one week, so bear with me. If I don't have answers to any of your questions this evening, I will do my best to get up to speed. I do have the governor's newsletter. Would you prefer that I put that into the chat room, put the link into the chat room? That'd be the best way to do this?
I have got you.
We'll do that, following my remarks. Also, I did want, excuse me?
Well, please go on.
Okay, also, I did want to give an update on the ongoing H1 repaving. And that's the corridor between the Kapialani Interchange and the Miller Street overpass. This is going westbound. As you may be aware, the H1 has been closed in the evenings from 8:30 to 4, 8:30 PM to 4:30 AM for repaving. The work is going to shift to Phase 2B, starting on October 26th. And during this, starting October 26th, H1 going westbound will be closed from University Avenue Interchange to the Alexander Street on ramp. And that will be between 8:30 PM to 4:30 AM, Sundays through Fridays. Again, 8:30 AM, 8:30 PM to 4:30 AM, Sundays through Friday, starting October 26th. That's expected to last maybe five or six weeks, whether, depending, depending on the weather. Going eastbound to Waikai, there will be some temporary lane closures to do some striping work. And that will occur on Wednesday, October 25th, between, starting at the Kapialani, excuse me, between Kinal Street to Kapialani. Again, H1 eastbound between Kinal Street to Kapialani Interchange. There'll be some temporary lane closures between the hours of 8:30 PM to 4:30 AM, starting Wednesday, October 25th. So just expect some delays and plan ahead if you could. Those are my updates for, from the Department of Transportation. On a side personal note, I do want to just say that of all the neighborhood boards that I could be assigned to, this is a great one. I grew up in the Makiki area, right at Keamoku and Nejua. Although I do not live there currently, my mother still lives in the same house that I grew up in. So I'm in the neighborhood all the time, probably more than I want, because she calls me all the time. But I am looking forward to working with all of you, and I will also pass along my contact information in the chat room. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, Russell. Flattery does get you pretty far on this board, and we appreciate that you have a personal connection, so welcome on the job. We look forward to working with you more.
Thank you.
My daddy's bad. Congratulations. My daddy's bad.
Yes, I recognize you. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Been a long time.
Any other comments or questions for Russell at this time? From board members or members of the public? Not seeing any others. We look forward to seeing you next month.
Great, thank you. Aloha.
All right, next up, Senator Carol Kupunak. Would you be able to join us up by the mic?
Sure. Thank you, Dave, for the board, for meeting in person, as well as virtually. I wanted to come in person today, because part of what I think is kind of a very productive new development that I wanted to highlight is two developments that are occurring in the city council. The first is the county legislation that would implement a statewide program to establish a new financing mechanism for really difficult-to-address infrastructure issues, like cesspool conversion on one hand, as well as fire safety improvements for specific condos on the other. And in my report, you have a little diagram showing how this program will work. Governor Ege signed the implementing state legislation into law in 2022. There are a lot of other states that are doing this. And during our last few months of the prior Public Infrastructure and Technology Committee meetings, we learned from the Office of Climate Change and Sustainability that the city was willing to pursue fire safety improvements as part of this legislation. So I think that's a very encouraging sign. The bill has been heard by the first committee, but of greater really significance to a lot of people in the public and to neighborhood board members. and to neighborhood board members is the fact that Councilmember Topola is also holding an informational briefing next Tuesday on fire sprinkler financing. So we want to really encourage people to, uh, sign up, to register and to ask questions, because, uh, for these kinds of financing solutions, they don't cost the city any money. Private investors are the ones who help put up the funds that are available. What happens is individual buildings would be assessed in sort of the same type of, uh, way that we otherwise deal with, um, what do they call it? Uh, TIF, you know, um, financing that is associated with specific, you know, transit or other improvements for a particular area. But in this instance, this gives condo owners and their condo associations a new form of, uh, financing that would be cheaper than regular bank financing. And, you know, in these times when it's been very, very difficult to come up with solutions, I think this is a really positive step forward for, other than that, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, but, um, this is really something that has taken about a year and a half to get to this point, so we're very excited.
Uh, any questions for the Senator at this time? Uh, please go ahead, Chair.
Yes, Senator, uh, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but I, I appreciate and, uh, cannot thank you enough for your tireless efforts in, in, you know, watching this life safety fire sprinkler system, um, program. So basically, it's still waiting to be formally approved?
Well, the bill will have to go through the council, you know, three readings process. So the county implementation is where the county decides that if they're going to participate, they have to pass, uh, an ordinance just like the state had to do. And once that occurs, then individual buildings can apply to become part of this program. The state's Green Infrastructure Authority will oversee the program, and they will work with financing, um, investors or banks, et cetera, to actually get the program underway. So there is a cost, you know, there is a lien that operates like a real property tax assessment, but the amount is relatively small in relation to the timeframe. It's usually over a twenty-year or longer period. And so if you're looking at sprinklers or fire alarm upgrades or any other kind of upgrades, that gives individual condo properties a lot more flexibility. So that's kind of the excitement. You know, we have been talking about this type of approach for a number of years, and especially with, um, the cesspool conversion issue. You know, that becomes a way for individual property owners and regions to be able to apply, to be able to take advantage of this program as well. So it can help some of our Atlas and Makiki Heights residents as well as condo residents. And so, uh, I'm, I'm very hopeful. We, um, really want to make sure that, you know, people ask questions, find out more, and let's make sure that, you know, however this, uh, gets implemented, that it really meets people's needs.
Do you see any, um, any, any objections from other groups that might, you know, prevent this from moving forward?
Well, I think for the most part, uh, you know, it's, it's pretty much something that has been tested in a number of states. Hawaii joins thirty-eight other states. It's been around for a while. Uh, the people who would be impacted are the ones who would be assessed. You know, this, this almost like, you know, small equivalent to, um, like a real property tax assessment. So the people who are going to benefit are also the ones who'll be paying into a long-term financing mechanism. Uh, for condos, the thing that becomes a little bit more tricky is that commercial lenders would also, you know, mortgage brokers, et cetera, would also have to give their approval. But the state agency that is responsible for implementing this program believes that, you know, if there is widespread support in the community, that those, um, mortgage lenders and others will, you know, participate and be willing to, uh, support it, because it also makes the condo, um, I guess, environment a lot more viable. You know, right now, we're facing a lot of, um, conditions where real property insurers for condos are actually looking at, in some instances, they may leave the market, you know, because some of them are just experiencing so many, um, claims across the country and elsewhere that condo insurance for, um, real property has become very, very expensive.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Senator, uh, I'd like some clarity on one part of it, it seems very interesting. Um, I'm wondering, so is this taking advantage of H G I A's gems, um, program? Is this a use of the gems program?
It is part of that whole gems initiative, and, uh, the way the bill would work, Bill fifty-six identifies, um, the kinds of qualifying improvements, uh, on page two of my report. You know, I identified septic systems, you know, which include cesspools, et cetera. But they also determine that fire safety improvements would also be an eligible type of improvement, partly because, uh, these are affixed to or connected to the buildings. And so H G I A would probably need to enter into, you know, some sort of, um, agreement, you know, with individual properties that want to participate. But we think it's a good way for condo associations that otherwise have been facing a lot of challenges to be able to pursue something that would actually give both residents and the condo association a lot more leeway, and it would be at a much lower cost.
I understand the program's leverage because the state and county has better access to lower interest loans. They can offer triple A bond ratings because it's based on leads, things like you described. So the lenders always get paid back, so it's very safe, uh, uh, low interest, but low risk investment sort of thing. But the way it's currently structured, of course, is to fund renewable energy related projects, as well as the goals are. Do you foresee this competing with renewable energy goals, or is there some sort of way to grow the pot to get more of evidence?
We think it's really a way to grow the pot, because part of what Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority has identified is the likelihood that more banks may also look favorably upon this particular financing mechanism, because you have a payback mechanism, you know, it's very low risk. You have the city's involvement, you know, as kind of having adopted legislation. The state will be administering, so it doesn't cost the state treasury, you know, any additional funds. It doesn't cost the city treasury any additional funds, but it's using their collective bargaining power and financial standing to access a new funding source that was not previously available.
Okay, um, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, I know it's just a very small program, so it makes me start thinking in the future, if we want to expand it even further, we go this direction. We might be looking towards a state bank or something like that, because it's a, it's rather, becoming a rather robust mission for H G I, uh, H G I. But it is a very creative one, and, uh, it definitely.
In this instance, it wouldn't necessarily be the same as the state appropriations that are going into Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority.
Okay.
You know, those were like the solar financing and other, uh, improvements that were being proposed. This is really a program where the owners in a particular facility sign an agreement, but the investors who are providing the financing are kind of in, uh, contract with the.
I see, so it's a similar parallel program, not the exact same.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you very much. I'm going to see if there's any other questions for you. Any other questions for the Senator? Uh, seeing none, thank you very much for joining us, we look forward to seeing you next month.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. Um, next item on the agenda is Representative Della Albalot, we recognize that this time.
Uh, good afternoon or good evening, Chair, this is not Della Albalani. Uh, I'm Tom Heiner, and she, uh, texted me just a few minutes ago, uh, as Senator Fukunaga was starting, that she had to, uh, leave, uh, and wanted me just to report on a couple of things real quick, if I may proceed. Um, the main point is, uh, that, uh, it is now October nineteen. Uh, January seventeen is opening day, uh, that really is now just three months away. Uh, it sounds like more than it is, uh, as everybody is super busy, both on the regular things during the interim, uh, but especially as, uh, everyone has commented at the last meeting, uh, since the August eighth, uh, Maui fires. Uh, the workload for everyone has changed, uh, as a result of needing to deal with so many different issues, uh, relating to Maui. Uh, in that respect, uh, the main point for right now is that, uh, we are all working on various things. Uh, uh, legislation, uh, et cetera, uh, to get ready for the twenty twenty-four, uh, regular session. Uh, for the Health Committee, which, uh, Representative Albalot chairs. Uh, we are planning a couple of informational briefings, uh, later this month and in November. Uh, I believe the first one coming up will, uh, deal with telehealth, uh, with a number of changes and the expansion of telehealth. Um, and then as well, uh, Representative Albalot is especially busy on both a shelter working group, specifically in relation to Maui, uh, but also several other task forces or working groups, uh, resulting from resolutions that were passed, uh, in this, uh, twenty twenty-three session. Uh, the last thing to be said for the moment, it is not too early that if you have certain, uh, ideas or concerns, uh, that you think are appropriate for the legislature uh, or your elected officials to consider, uh, please, uh, contact, uh, any of them now. Uh, simply the more time that we have to do the research, uh, and really kick some ideas around and, and see what the best alternatives would be, uh, it's going to be that much more, uh, helpful. Uh, time is going fast, uh, as we, uh, get close to the end of this year and getting ready for the twenty-fourth session. So let me just stop there, uh, and if there are any questions, whatever, be happy to take them back. Thank you, Chair.
I'll thank you very much. Uh, Logan, does anyone have their hand raised and no longer have a laptop on? Okay, does anyone have a question for Tom at this time, or to take back to Representative Albalot? Well, hearing none, I will say, please do keep us up to date on the informational briefings, especially as it may relate to homelessness, as the course is a recurring topic, uh, for this board. Uh, and of course, you're, uh, working for the Chair of the Health and Homelessness Committee. So, uh, we would definitely be interested in, uh, keeping the community up to date on that.
Okay, appreciate that, Chair, just one last quick comment. Uh, if, uh, for exactly what you said, uh, if the members or the public, uh, wish to double check or check the legislature's website at W W W dot capital spelled O L, so capital dot Hawaii dot G O V. Uh, now's a good time to kind of play around, and you can sign up, uh, for, uh, various committee notices, which would include the info briefing notices, et cetera. Uh, so now's a good time, uh, to actually be able to check out the legislature's website, uh, before it gets too much into a time crunch. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, we'll, uh, move on then to Representative Andrew Garrett. I know he's not available this evening, do we have a representative with us?
Yes, Chair, good evening, Chair Ross and members of the Neighborhood Board Committee. Um, I'm Melanie, I'm Rep Garrett's office manager. Uh, Rep Garrett is off island participating in a finance committee site visit on, um, Hawaii Island, and he asked me to give a brief report on his behalf. Uh, let's see, so he is also serving, um, as co-chair on the House interim working group on jobs and business to address, to address the Maui wildfire relief. Um, the, uh, the group convened meetings with, um, several agencies, D-Bed, H G A, um, U-Hero, D L, D L I R, to discuss economic impact of the August eighth Maui wildfires and reopening of West Maui tourism. A draft report is due November first, which will include recommendations on twenty twenty-four legislation to support recovery. And the working group is also, um, planning to hold a public meeting to gather feedback from the Maui business community. Uh, the final report is due December fifteenth. And I'm happy to take any questions or concerns back to Representative Garrett at this time, if there are any. Thank you.
Uh, any questions or comments for the representative at this time? Seeing none, uh, thank you very much for your report, and we look forward to seeing you as the representative next month.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Uh, we're now going to move on to the city and county of Honolulu, monthly reports continue, uh, starting with the Department of Transportation Services. Do we happen to have a representative this evening? If not, I do believe we do still have some updates, so we can move on to Mayor Rick Blangiardi, Representative, uh, Denise, uh, you with us this evening? Good to see you again.
I met, I am, good evening, aloha and good evening, uh, board members. I, I do have actually a report back on some of the issues that were raised in the last meeting from D T S. Can y'all hear me okay?
We can hear you great, thank you.
Okay, so the first one was, uh, regarding the request to conduct a traffic study in the Thurston Street area. The Department of Transportation Services will evaluate if a crosswalk, speed bumps or humps are appropriate in the intersections of Thurston Avenue and Green Street and Thurston and Wilder Avenues, based on the geometrics of the roadway, traffic speeds and volumes, the number of travel lanes and surrounding development. If the roadways meet the criteria for a speed hump or bump, D T S will prioritize locations and will either program the installation or request assistance from the State, uh, Department of Transportation to implement the speed bumps or humps. Um, however, they do note that, uh, this process may take some time to ensure decisions are based on sound engineering principles. The second, um, follow-up is also from D T S. This is regarding Prospect Street, pros, at the intersection of Prospect, Alapai, um, regarding the request to install stop signs and any other safety measures at this intersection. So the report back was that D T S submitted a work order, uh, to install the appropriate signage with the Department of Facilities Maintenance and Maintenance for roadway markings for the proposed Always Stop, uh, controlled intersection. Um, so that is where it's at now, work order has been placed with D F M, and, and they're going to take some time to respond to that. So that's the follow-ups from the prior meeting. For, uh, this month, uh, we'd like to re, report that Safe and Sound Waikiki Initiative marks its first year. And last month, Mayor Blangiardi joined Prosecutor Attorney Steve Amm and Council Chair Tommy Waters and various other community and law enforcement leaders to celebrate the anniversary of the initiative. Since housing and homelessness is near and dear to this board's heart and to a lot of people in the community, um, I did want to report that September was a very busy month when it comes to the city facilitating the creation of new affordable housing. And one of the ways the city has helped drive the production of housing is by making its lands available for the development of affordable housing with long-term ground leases, about seventy-five years. Uh, there was a total of four parcels made available by competitive bid several years ago. These projects are now coming online, that will add a total of over eight hundred units to our inventory. First two lots are Lot Six and Seven in Kapale, out in Kapale Parkway. Uh, that will yield a total of four hundred five units. It's the largest low-income housing tax credit project to date, and will also feature two preschools in walking distance. This project broke ground last month. Halewiliiko at the old I A S Sugar Mill will yield a total of a hundred forty units, and that just broke ground the other day. Haleviolu is another project, it's a tax credit project on River Street that will be for low-income rentals. It'll total a hundred fifty-six housing units for seniors. The project is completed and is in the process of leasing up. In addition to these, uh, four parcels, another parcel was made available years ago and is, um, getting ready to get into its financing is Kalemao Village out in Westlock and Eva Beach. That'll yield another one hundred twenty-seven units.
Huh?
In addition to that, uh, the, most recently, uh, the city acquired Kiha, Kiha Pi Place in Kailua. It's the city. the city acquired Kihaipai Place in Kailua. It's the city's most recent land acquisition that was acquired in August of this year. And our Department of Land Management is planning to publish a solicitation by the first quarter of next year to make it available to a private or nonprofit developer to potentially develop 40 new affordable housing rental units. On top of all of this, we have several projects that are coming up through Bill Seven that are in the near vicinity. The first one is on Ernest Street. That's 1427 Ernest Street by Paul Lamb. I believe that's 25 units. And that project is up and they are awaiting their certificate of occupancy this week. The same developer has another project on Kinal Street that'll yield about the same amount of units. And last but not least, they have a 90-unit project coming up on Pensacola later on, hopefully this year. I do want to recognize and thank Councilmember Say for being the champion on Bill Seven and also on Bill Six, which helps to expedite the processing of the permitting for projects under Bill Seven. Bill Seven projects are absolutely necessary. These projects are privately financed and the city affords these projects some discretion in terms of the zoning and building code so that they can be feasibly built. So that kind of wraps up my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open up two questions from the board first, starting with Chuck.
Yes, Denise, I was wondering if you could help me maybe talk to the Department of Transportation Services. This is in regards to the bikeway on between Wilder and Luna Lilo. I know I questioned the usage at our past meeting. And I think you might have quoted or you might have reported that there was 200 and some odd people going through a day or whatever it was. But my concern is, I mean, I live there and I've had a lot of people that are residents in that area and outside of that area to drive through that street that, you know, we hardly see any usage of it, okay? And why I think they are concerned that I'm concerned is because when Pence Metro, that new building that's coming up on the corner of Luna Lilo and Pensacola is 29 units. And I know that they may not have, you know, not every unit might have a car, but then that's going to impact parking in that area. We already have a lot of people parking illegally on that street because, as I mentioned in previous meetings, also the curbs are not properly painted striped red. So people are parking all over the place to the extent that they park in front of the bus, you know, bus stops. And, you know, just if somebody could just do a study and see if it's worth keeping that. And I just want to go on record to say that I'm not against bike lanes. I'm just concerned that the usage is not there to justify having the bike lane. And with the increase in residents in that area coming up, you know, we're going to see more and more parking illegally and, you know, people being very inconvenienced with parking. So whatever can be done as far as a study would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you for that that comment. I want to make sure I have your inquiry straight. So the question is to conduct another study. I'm not sure if one was conducted already, but to conduct another study to check the usage, is that what you're asking to verify? To I guess kind of justify that bike lane. Is that the inquiry?
I could be wrong. I could be wrong if there was another, there was a study. I'm just going by what I heard was the usage. So I'm thinking that something is being surveyed on a daily basis or whatever period of time. But I'm just asking if they could reevaluate that bike lane. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, I do have notes from September that there was a Pensacola. Okay, so this one was a Pensacola Street bike lane usage. This is a different street?
That might be the same one.
Okay, so the city, I think DTS responded and they said the city is required to consider the safe safety of all modes of transportation for the complete streets ordinance that was passed by City Council. And according to DTS, the new Active Transportation Monitoring Program, the protected bike lane on Pensacola currently has an average of 225 daily users. And then they cited a website. You know, I also noticed that in the city's sustainability plan, there's a commitment made to some of these initiatives. So I can go back and place this inquiry, but I think that might be similar to what they've already reported on.
Okay, whatever you could do would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much for that. Let's see, I actually do have a question for you. Oh, I'm going to recognize Corinne first and then I'll get you with a question as well. Corinne, please go first.
I just wanted to note that there's been extensive construction and parking of large vehicles in the bike lane on Waikiki in that area as of late, which might be causing some people to take alternate routes. And for reasons I have no idea why they moved the Waikiki Station that was at the end of Pensacola, so if people are noticing the bike lane is being used less, it could be temporary and due to those factors. That's all.
Thank you for that comment. With regard to illegal parking, I think we'd have to refer that to HPD. DTS doesn't monitor the illegal parking.
Oh, I wasn't suggesting it was illegal. I'm sorry. I just meant that the construction vehicles are parked in the bike lane. That's all.
Okay. So I have a question for you. First off, I think we sped past this rather quick, but I do want to actually mahalo you and everyone who's been involved. Mayor, City Council members are moving with quite a lot of speed towards resolving that five-way intersection. Hearing that the work order's gone in is really good news. I know we can't really estimate time purely based on that, but I remember last time we worked on an intersection, the work order preceded installation by about two months. And I think this is a pretty good example of government being quite responsive to this board and the community's concerns. So I want to take a moment to recognize that. I'm going to contrast it pretty strongly though in a second. So specifically, you were talking about the mayor's initiatives and the county's initiatives on affordable housing. You listed some pretty good projects and following that in the media. But I was wondering, following up on an article yesterday by Christina Jera from the Honolulu Civil Beach. She mentioned that some building permit applicants sailed through while most are quite slow. And DPP is often seen as one of the choke points that really slows down our ability to meet housing. Of course, it's recognized in the media for being understaffed, underpaid, and there's been a lot of high-profile corruption cases. Can you share anything that the mayor's working on for DPP for improving the agency's capacity to, you know, meet the demands of permits that are coming through and ensure that they're all being given the same care treatment?
Thank you for the question, Chair Ross. You know, the most appropriate department to answer for that would be DPP. But I can tell you, DPP, the DPP Director has come before council to present the initiatives that they're working on, and I believe they are available online. Because she comes, so Director Takeuchi Apuna comes monthly before the council to give an update. But if I could just sum it up, and you're welcome to go check online for the videos. DPP has had historical problems that has spanned decades. But this is the first director under this administration that is really looking at the root causes of the problem. One of them is the capacity. They are working closely with HR to find qualified staff and improve the package, I guess, employment package to attract competent staff to take these jobs. She's also working on increasing the salaries within the range that she can because she has to work with collective bargaining on this. So, you know, it's always a heavy competition to compete for qualified people with the private sector. That's one. She's also investing in training. So that's something that may not have been done in the recent past. She's looking at investing in training. One of the biggest steps that I think this director has done is realize that the software that they depend on is obsolete and decades old. So she's actually, and thank you, Janelle has posted something in the chat, so you can see what the progress has been. She's actually investing in technology, modernizing the technology that they have to do with. I think one of the more recent initiatives has been that instant online permitting that they now have available on their website. So, you know, out of the big backlog that they had of these permits, a lot of them were for, say, PV, solar water, individual homeowner upgrades, like fence repairs. Those can now be done in a more expedited fashion by this initiative that they call the instant online permitting. They also, I think, are now using an artificial intelligence to help with the pre-screening process. So she's cut that down from, you know, multiple months to, I want to say, days in just the pre-screening process. So I think there's been a number of initiatives that are going to take time to show and manifest the benefits of it all. But this is the first time this has happened, so I really want to give that director and DPP, you know, a shout out for looking at the tough problems and addressing them from, you know, a high level that's going to take a lot of investment in terms of time and energy and funding, but she's doing it now.
Well, thank you very much. I know that was a hard question, but you know, one of the advantages of having the Executive Director of the Office of Housing reporting to our board is we can ask tough housing questions. So thank you for being thorough and giving us a lot to look forward to.
Yes, by all means. And I do want to add to Bill Six because, like I said, this Bill Six is there to help expedite some of the permitting, especially for projects under Bill Seven, like the low-income rentals coming up on Ernest Street and Kinal Street and Pensacola Street. This Bill Six is supposed to help expedite that, and we really have to thank Councilmember Say for that. So that's another initiative that should help.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much for the thorough answer on that. That's very helpful. It's an additional reading for all of us. I recognize John at this time. He has a question for you as well.
Sure.
Actually, I guess, especially with the board members and as well. We have to remember, we can go out, we can rush in and we can put a new bike lane in. History says, three months from now, we're going to go and take the bike lane out again. But we need to look at the total community impact. It's easy to rush on something, suddenly find it doesn't work, and getting it undone is something that we ought to be responsible for. All citizens, not just the ones that have something they're feeling they need. Be careful, we think, how does it make everybody get sidetracked and just have a small problem? Is that a comment? Yeah, just a comment. All these things are wonderful. Remember Mary Harris was doing, oh, it's a wonderful thing. It got out of control, you know. But he was a great guy, but gee. I do some of those in three or four years.
Thank you for your comment.
All right, Logan, can you just show me if any of their hands up? Seeing none, thank you so much for your report. We look forward to seeing you again next month.
Sure thing. Thank you very much.
Okay, I recognize City Councilmember Calvin Say at this time.
Hi, Chair Ross. This is Janelle from Councilman Say's office. Unable to attend today, so you've got me. I've put the link to his newsletter and our contact information into the chat box and I am happy to take any questions back.
Right, okay. Let's see, do we have any questions from board members at this time? Seeing none, any questions from members of the audience? Not seeing any one question, I guess, would back to you and the office. Is if there's any appetite for any areas we didn't get to check out Waikiki that you've heard about or in the, you know, the rest of the parts of the district, maybe the lower Punch Bowl that's under his area. We had a great tour. We appreciated the notes. So we did have some talk that time about a part two. So I think about now is the time to start considering if there are additional locations that we really ought to check out personally.
Yeah, absolutely. We can start planning for a part two.
Yeah, we'll try to go when it's colder next time, not necessarily warm. But okay, thanks so much.
Chair Ross.
Yes, please go ahead, Richard.
Hi, yeah, I'm sorry. I got a new device. I don't know how to put the raise my hand on it. For Janelle, for Councilman Say, I brought this up at the previous meetings. And the maintenance fee to our condo has more than doubled in the last seven years, various reasons. One of the things is that mandated increases in reserve funds. And we're going to have another five to 15% increase on top of this doubling next year, we've been told. Because there's been additional mandated reserve fund items, which is well and good, but because all this has been happening in the last seven, eight years, we've had more delinquencies. We've had folks that have moved out of our condo because they could no longer afford it. And for my wife and I too, where, you know, it's becoming an issue also. So for Councilmen Say and for the other folks there that whenever, how much consideration is given to whenever you pass a law with all good intentions, like making sure that condos have enough money put aside to fix things, that there is the unintended consequences of raising maintenance fees so high that people could no longer afford to live in these condos. And this is happening, I'm sure, not just in our condo, but other condos also. So it all, you know, it's all about the cost of living here in Hawaii. So if you could comment on that or please bring that back to Councilman Say.
Yeah, absolutely, Richard. Bring that back to him. I don't necessarily directly a city thing, but I do know that the council members are very cognizant when they're passing mandates. And for example, the sprinklers has been quite a financial burden and they've been, through Senator Fukunaga, trying to figure out ways to to help out the condo owners for that. But I see that Tom Heinrich has his hand up, so I'm not sure if he wanted to respond to that.
Yeah, excuse me, just one more comment. Our building is not mandated to put in sprinkler systems because we have open hallways. But we're going to have to add incredible cost to all the residents here because the insurance companies are going to put us in a category where the insurance will go so high because we don't have sprinklers, even though it's not mandated. And so we're really caught between a rock and a hard place. But thank you for your comments and please bring this to the councilman. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I recognize, I recognize Tom Heinrich at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I really wanted to defend.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I really wanted to defend my good friend Janelle because most of the reserve fund requirements for condominiums, et cetera, is state statute. But, Richard, you have well spoken on this at several meetings, and I will be sure to pass that on to all of the state folks here that come before the Makiki Neighborhood Board. It's not entirely state, as you just discussed, some of the other effects on condominium owners by different changes to building code or fire sprinklers or whatever. But the reserve fund itself especially is at state law level. But I will pass that on to Representative Garrett and Aladi and Senator Fukunaga. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much. I would like to recognize Senator Pharoah Fukunaga. I believe she might be able to weigh in on this topic for us as well.
You know, Member Kawano brings up a very good point. Several condominium properties who are not necessarily required to install sprinklers or fire safety improvements because of the way their buildings are constructed have also been hit with higher insurance premiums. So one of the things that the legislature did this year was to require DCCA to conduct a confidential survey of all of the affected properties to find out how high their insurance premiums had gone. And we're looking to the department to help us rein in some of those increases because, as Richard mentioned, his building is not subject to the requirement to install any fire safety improvement. But they're just taking anybody who has no fire sprinklers and upping their rates, and we don't think that that's fair. So the, the survey results are supposed to be compiled and distributed to the legislature at the end of October. So I hope we can have some answers for Richard at a later date.
You said the end of August, remember?
No, end of October. So hopefully, the next meeting, we should be able to.
Thank you very much, Senator. Richard, did you have a follow up? I can recognize you briefly again.
Yes, Senator. Senator, thank you. But, you know, our fire insurance has gone up 10 times in the last four years. So it's just been, again, you know, our delinquencies are up, people are having to move out. Yeah, it's, I, I know it's a worldwide, we've been told it's a worldwide problem with, because of all these billion dollar disasters around the world that we've been told that we're all in this big insurance worldwide bucket. And, yeah, it's not going to get any better. Thank you.
One, one point, though, in response to Richard's concern is the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs regulates insurance availability and rates. So if we are being caught in a really unworkable situation, the state can also step in to make adjustments to what is currently happening. So, you know, in those instances, these kinds of premium increases that would tend to drive people out of their homes is not what we are willing to live with over time.
Chair, just a fast question. Senator, you said that they're DCCA doing a study now?
They conducted a survey of all of the properties that are covered by the city's fire sprinkler ordinance. So in Member Kawano's case, his building may not have been surveyed, but I'm happy to follow up with him and, you know, report or see if there's a way that we can have his building communicate with the department just to let them know about some of the problems that they've experienced over the years because, you know, that's really not what we want to see happening.
And I think we have to reel it in a little bit as we, we are still under the council members' report. But it seems to be a topic that's engaging a lot of us. And if there's any requests from board members, we can certainly put this on the agenda and spend more time on in the near future. Perhaps even next month, if the report's truly coming out in the next week or so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to bring us back to Janelle. Did you have any final thoughts? I admit to forgetting somewhat where we were in the discussion, so taking us a step back on this.
Uh, no, no final thoughts. I, I don't know if there's any more questions out there in the audience, but that's it for me.
I don't believe, I don't believe so. So thank you very much for your report and for being here to answer questions, also mahalo to the senator. And I'm going to move on then to Councilmember Tyler DeSanto's stamp.
Hi, everyone. It's Robin Henske. So, hi, hi, Chair. A quick report. Not meaning to repeat any information that I know is going to be brought up later on the agenda. But council member is looking into establishing a more dog parks, parks in the district. And I know this board is really passionate about incorporating a park into a neighborhood in the area. I know that's going to be part of the discussion. So I wanted to let you know that, you know, Councilmember DeSantis Tam is fully on board with that. I also wanted to quickly mention our game rooms package that we've introduced that will be discussed later with the board. And to follow up with, I know what Denise spoke of earlier. Our office has followed up with Deputy Director John Nucci. I know the timeline of the five-way stop is hard to determine, but we're asking kind of for a general understanding of the starting point of construction. We understand that the roadway signs have been implemented and the work order has been put in. But we would just like a general understanding of when this construction will take place, so we can inform constituents as they call in. And just a quick reminder, we're going to have a park cleanup at Peter Buck Park Sunday, November 12. You can sign up for the event through our newsletter that's in the chat box. And then finally, I put in also in the chat box the state and city pharaoh chicken removal programs and the vendors to contact for each program. So if there's any questions, I'm here. I can take back to the council member.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see, I don't see any hands up at this time. Oh, I see one. Tom Heinrich, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Chair. Robin, I'm not familiar with the name Peter Buck Park. So can you provide a little bit more details on that and even in the chat? But if you could be more specific as to location, et cetera, for the audience. Thanks.
Yes, I will absolutely put in more information in the chat box. Definitely. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll be ready to move on in the agenda then to a topic that we're I'm already seeing post about in the comments section. So Robin, thank you so much for the report. Please stay online. So of course, we have some discussion points that will apply to you as well. Um, moving on to unfinished business, safety at the intersection of Prospect Street and Olapai Street. Obviously, we had movement on this last month. We had a robust discussion. I just wanted to include an unfinished business in case there was any additional board action or discussion needed. So I want to open it up to the board first and then the broader community. Any board members have anything, any comments or motions at this time? I just find it's usually pretty useful to allow for some follow ups after any big action. Anyone in the community wanting to speak on this topic at this time? Okay, then we're able to move on to new business resolution demanding the state and county of, the state and county of Maui to expedite its Maui County Resiliency Hub Network reoperation, explore recovery and rebuilding of residential homes impacted by the August 8, 2023 Maui wildfires. I'm going to include a link. This was drafted by Board Member Farden. And I went ahead and highlighted three areas that I think might be worthwhile to consider mending or editing. But we can bring that up more in discussion in a moment. I included a link in the chat for anyone who's interested in reading more. And some of these areas highlighting are things that people have messaged to me as well. So I'll give that a moment, and then discussion's open if anyone wants to comment on this. All right, Corinne, you're recognized at this time.
I was just had a question for Member Farden, if she was the drafter. Is that what you said, that she was the drafter?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there some evidence or information that the Maui, people of Maui are wanting this? Because I definitely want to support them. If you have any information on what, if they're asking for this, I'd appreciate it.
There is a worthwhile question. I do not currently have the answer for you.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Is, is Farden not, is Elena not here?
She's not here this evening, no. Any further discussion or any motion at this time?
Motion to adopt?
Oh, well, so I got, I got two motions at the same time. One was a motion to postpone, which I believe is a motion to table. And then there was a motion to adopt at the same time. What do we do when we get motions at the same time? Oh, I see. Okay. Were you asking a question or making a motion?
Making a motion.
Okay.
If you don't have a way to speak to it now, it's better for going around.
Okay, so the motion takes precedent. Is there a second for a motion to table? Motion to postpone is fun. Pardon me. Is there a second for a motion to postpone?
Second.
Sure, I said that.
Okay, Richard seconds. Okay, we're opening discussion. I want to recognize Nathan.
Uh, I mean, I was gonna say, I would like to hear what Elena has to say about this. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it. That's my contribution.
Okay. Let's see, is there any further discussion on the motion? Pardon me, I'm getting a lot of feedback. Any further discussion, the motion to table, sorry, motion to postpone? Hearing none, I'm going to seek unanimous consent for this. Is anyone opposed or abstaining on this motion? Hearing none, we'll postpone to the next meeting in November. Are we still on the topic despite the motion passing right now? Is there any further discussion about this at this time? No? Was it postponing of the agenda item or the resolution?
Well, there's no motion to adopt.
All right, we'll move on at this time then to board business. So the first item is Chair's report. So very briefly. I've had a number of discussions in the community recently about potential items for different types of meetings. So as since here, I am able to call meetings, including joint meetings and special meetings without necessarily requiring any sort of vote or anything from the board. So I just wanted to share some of my thoughts on some of the ideas that have come up recently. So we can have some discussion about that. One is I recommend that we hold a focus meeting on the topic of parks with particular focus on the establishment of a dog park in Makiki during our February regular meeting. Focus meetings on parks and dog parks had not been necessary previously as we had a committee to be able to meet on this. We do not have a committee on it at this time. But I will, you know, tell you, and I'm sure some of you have experienced similar things. When I walk down the street, anyone with a dog knows we've talked about dog parks on this board, and they ask us, they ask me, where's the dog park? Where's the discussion? And I want to be able to tell them, it's in February. We'll clear out the entire agenda. We'll lay out pictures of each park, pros and cons, and have a robust conversation on it. And I'm inclined to do that. What we could do, again, is do a little bit more promoting, like our walk around the community, like the five-way intersection. We could put out some press releases and get some information about. We can consider a few flyers that we could give out to some board members to hand to anyone with a dog they walk by in Makiki or the surrounding area. I think it'd be a pretty straightforward thing, and by picking out well in advance, I imagine we might be quite well attended. So that's my thoughts on that. Further recommendation is having talked to a number of people. My understanding is Bill 57 and 58 before the City Council right now relate to game rooms. And one of the conversations we had during our tour of the community, one of the things that people brought up was concerns related to game rooms. And I think it could be very useful for our board to bring it up. And we're not the only board affected by this potentially pending legislation. So my recommendation is we actually email every neighborhood boardship with a special focus in the email to those representing the urban Honolulu area and encourage them to actually have a joint meeting with us in the first or second week of November. And I have reached out to Logan to ask about times when the NCO might be able to host us as a location. No venue could really necessarily host more than two or so boards at a time. Last time we did a joint meeting with three people. It was attended by 200 individuals. So we would be encouraging virtually everyone except for presenters to, or people who have computer issues to attend via WebEx. But I think it's pressing. The bills are pending and potentially get action this year. And it is an issue that affects our community and surrounding areas. Finally, this comes up, I believe, based on our last meeting from Senator Fukunaga had mentioned concerns related to wildfires in Makiki and the surrounding areas. And as promised, I put it on the agenda for discussion to gauge interest on trying to hold a joint meeting or a focus meeting specifically on fires in our areas. Of course, the Kiki Heights had that fire a couple of months ago. That was a topic of discussion. We might not even need to clear out a full meeting, but there was, as reported by the senator, other boards having similar concerns. So it could be an opportunity to have more discussion. Unlike the previous two, I don't necessarily recommend it, but I do think it's very warranted to have a discussion under the chair's report as to whether we should move forward on something like that. And with that, I open up two questions. Questions or comments? I recognize Corinne at this time.
It sounds like a good idea. I like it.
All three? Nathan, I recognize you at this time.
Yeah, I'll just echo Corinne's comment. These are all great ideas, and I look forward to it.
Okay. It means we will be cramming in one more meeting for the year. Richard, you recognize.
Yes, as far as the dog park for during the February regular, it's not the whole meeting, but it'll be like a prime agenda item for that meeting.
So I would be inclined to use all my tools as chair, barring extreme circumstances, not allow any other agenda items besides reports or any other business items but this. And that's just to be able to get a good 45, 15 minutes dedicated just to that discussion. We would still receive legislative reports, though, and government reports.
Okay, thank you.
And in more, because we have new board members who might not be aware of what that would mean. I can't flat out deny an agenda item request, but I'd be putting it all under consideration to add to an agenda. We should put a benchmark toward making it more difficult for that to be heard. And I will be asking people to not recommend agenda items unless they are real emergencies. Yes, Logan, please go ahead.
Yeah, just a comment about you guys holding meetings at the NCO. I did have a conversation. I saw an email that you sent to, not sure exactly who was included in it, but the NCO, and me especially, I'm more than welcome, or I'm more than happy to staff your guys' monthly meetings. But as far as you guys were to hold like a special meeting, that's why I don't think that, at least at Papal Mahale, it wouldn't be available just because if you guys don't have a neighborhood assistant from the NCO there, it wouldn't be. I don't think, I don't think it would be allowed, I believe.
Did you ask if it was allowed?
Did I ask?
You said you're not sure if it'd be allowed.
Yeah, sorry, just to be clear, it would, it would almost like certainly not be, yeah, not be entertained.
Okay. That's good to know. So we'd have to determine another location that could host it well.
You guys could also just use your meeting as the kind of central area, if that makes sense, where, you know, you have the joint meeting and just invite others to this meeting and have it in like a joint focus, basically.
So a detail I didn't include, that would be too late.
Yeah.
To be able to weigh in effectively on the. So a detail I didn't include, that would be too late to be able to weigh in effectively on the bills, thus rendering it not really something that would be actionable.
Yeah, I understood. That's why I brought it up second.
Fair enough.
How many chairs are available?
Well, the concern then would be we would need to have cameras and microphone equipment basically provided by ourselves.
And what we've got, we can organize.
Then people wouldn't be able to hear anyone speaking. They bring their speakers. They wouldn't be bringing speakers in this case. I think we can too. We on that point of discussion, Robin or Janelle, do you know anything that the county might be able to offer as far as meeting spaces?
I don't know offhand what the stock would be, but we can definitely look into it.
Okay.
I don't know either, but yeah, I think we can both figure out something and get back to you.
Okay. That'd be very helpful then. Okay. Well, anyway, based on the feedback, I'll be moving towards trying to get the meeting, special meeting held in November. We'll move forward with the dog parks focus meeting in February. And were there any more comments? I'm not hearing a lot of interest, but not dismissal either on something related to wildfires more directly. Any other thoughts on that?
Our wildfire area will be a long one.
Well, maybe we'll start that with an agenda item and then consider more action with other boards if we find the robust discussion. Okay. I think we're ready to move on. Any other comments from any other attendees at this time? Okay, we'll move on to staff. Oh, Richard, please go ahead.
Yeah, about the wildfire, I think that's really important. I remember about oh, good twenty-five years ago, we had a really long extended drought here in Honolulu and all the hills around us, Tanalis, pretty much turned brown. And what happened in Lahaina can happen again. So that's, I think we're all pretty much aware of that. And it's a very scary thought.
All right, we'll move on to establishment of board budget. Let's see, I believe our treasurer just left.
Two minutes ago.
Okay. That is a bonus. So I did receive an email from Hugh. The draft budget. Do you have it? Oh, perfect. Okay. The draft budget would be that we could hire HPR because it would be focused on a civically minded demographic by his estimation and pay a hundred twenty-five dollars per announcement. We don't have the budget for a thousand dollars anymore as we've allocated money towards repayment for promoting the previous meeting. But we could have six announcements for that amount of money on HPR saying, you know, HPR sponsored by the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl, Tanalis Neighborhood Board. And that's his recommendation for the budget use at this time. Any discussion on board budget? I will share it's seven thirty-seven. So we do have time for a good, maybe five or 10 minutes on the topic of how we want to outuse our funds. I think we'd be able to still finish within a few minutes on time under that. So it's not necessarily a rush on this agenda item.
I think I have a Christmas party. Yeah, you know. COVID is down. Got my RSV shot in today, so I'm not gonna do anything.
A Christmas party, okay. I mean, here, potentially. Well, we have decided not to have a meeting in December. Do we want to potentially do that instead? Alternatively, do we want to do an early Christmas party at our next meeting?
Yeah. We're fine people. We always have a party.
Might be a good way to get people back in person.
Yeah.
Logan, would that typically be considered a proper use?
I would say definitely not. I can definitely check. I can definitely check. Depends on how you word it, right?
Well, I remember, I mean, it's a good form of outreach. It lets people know where to come for the meetings. Any other thoughts on allocation of our board funds? I see Thomas's hand is raised.
So in the spirit of, you know, what that money ought to be used for, which should be towards promoting our meetings in some way or fashion, so we can bring more residents to our meetings. Maybe some sort of community service project. I'm not sure what that would look like, but maybe instead of a Christmas party, a Christmas community service project of some kind that we can promote and encourage people to come in. Not again, not sure what that would look like, but some way for us to give back and promote ourselves more to the community and involve more than just us. So.
Oh, sorry, another hand up. Corinne, your, oh, is your hand up? I'm gonna recognize Corinne and then Chuck.
I like the idea of hosting a service project during the event around the holidays, but I was just going to suggest that maybe we call it a holiday project or a holiday event rather than a Christmas event, so it can be inclusive, people who don't celebrate Christmas.
Okay, well, we typically adjourn all through December. Are there people who'd be interested in, you know, putting their time into working on this?
Hey, we're not at our.
Okay, so let's see, give me one second. Anyone else who wants to discuss is welcome to to continue the discussion.
Yeah.
Please go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, piggybacking on John's idea, I think, or John, Tom's idea and John's. As far as the service project, I think that's a great idea. I think another aspect to that is after the service project, if all of us or however many board members could be available after to be to like a meeting, we just, you know, exchange any ideas or whatever, would be open to whatever ideas or concerns the residents might have.
That's a good one. I was trying to see if there's a list of Makiki District Park activities coming up to see if we could piggyback off of those, but there's not a clear calendar of events in the same way. We're trying to do something holiday related, of course, is the Manoa Parade. That'd be the nearest community one we could participate in. That would be sort of, you know, that sort of fun thing we could give something out. You know, we've already spent some money on flyers and stuff like that. That's interesting. Some other ideas that we came up with. One second. It's not as fun as John's, I will freely admit. We could use something like Spotify advertising campaign, which can target via zip code to typically for about two hundred fifty dollars, we can expect ten thousand to sixteen thousand reaches. We can spread that out over the year to tell people when to come. And if we teamed up with a neighboring board that shares our zip code, such as Manoa Board, we do a two for one. We know of this date, us that date, to bring down the budget costs. We could do plaques, asking people to clean it back for their pets. This has come up before as well as an idea that, you know, there is increased pet waste on our sidewalks and reminding them not to do that could be nice. We could support our neighborhood security watch and commission some signs that can go up on our building saying this building dissipates in security watch, we call nine-one-one on suspicious activity proudly sponsored by our board. We could use our budget for about five hundred to seven hundred fifty. We could produce a video ad of fifteen to thirty seconds. It'd be a pretty high quality with a videographer just saying what our board is about and putting that on social media and also potentially seeing if we can work with the NCO to put it on a webpage. We could set aside a hundred or so for flyers for the rest of the year. We could do a mailer, can't do the whole community, or we could do it just to condo boards, so a few hundred telling about our meetings and how they can, you know, interact with us. We could all.
You can go ahead and send a poster. They could use.
Yes.
Rather than a letter, we have to get very.
Yep, that's a good point. So instead of just in postcard to the board, ask him, please put this up. We could spend quite a bit of money and make a big fancy trophy and give it to some sort of resident of the year. I make a big deal of that and maybe make it coveted, increase some civic spirit. And then similar to what John was saying, we could do some sort of community chili and rice event for the year. And a few of the other ideas were that was about it. So those were the ones that have been discussed so far. I recognize Nathan.
I was gonna say, I think the way I originally got involved in the neighborhood board was there used to be like a banner or something that announced that there's a neighborhood board meeting that was put up on the side of the park. That might be a handy dandy budget conscious solution.
Those usually cost about eighty to a hundred or so.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a little more affordable than a thousand bucks for an HPR ad that goes for three months.
Okay, I recognize.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, you know, I I think social media is the best way to a lot of that can, I'm thinking a lot of that can be free. There would be some effort. I would be opposed to the Hawaii Public Radio. And I think social media would be, we could have much better impact, all these different, you know, Nextdoor and all these different social media sites. And that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, say that again?
I didn't quite catch you said you are opposed or aren't opposed.
Yeah, I'd be opposed to spending, I'd be opposed to spending a thousand dollars on some Hawaii Public Radio. You know, fifteen second ads. I mean, that goes statewide. I'd like to be more focused.
Okay, thank you very much. Thomas, you're recognized again.
Thank you, Chair. Regarding a banner, this is more directed towards the neighborhood assistant, but don't all of the boards have a banner, is my understanding?
Oh, yeah, we apparently we do all have banners.
I, I
I have a banner? You gave me a banner?
I gave someone a banner. Yeah, because, yeah, Thomas is right. Every board has one and it's not at the office. So it was given to one of the board members, probably late last term.
I was given papers. I wasn't given any banner. In late last term, we were still meeting all month.
Yeah, it might have been, I mean, it might have been Dylan before.
I see a banner in the corner there. We should maybe check the banners in this room.
Step one, locate the banner.
Yes. Thomas, thank you very much for that point. Corinne, you're recognized at this time.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing. So if this was already said, I apologize, but does this money have to be spent on outreach? And I guess the reason I'm wondering is there was talk of that of being able to use funds to contract someone to catch the roosters. Is that is that something that the board would be allowed to spend money on?
Can you hear me okay, Corinne?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I would I would say probably not. This is just, again, I, it's hard to say before I actually take it back to the office. But I would say that it really is supposed to be for outreach and, you know, bringing attention to your guys' meetings. Like, stuff like that is great. And but I think the best way to do stuff like that is exactly how you guys do, to advocate to your legislators and your lawmakers in your meetings. The thousand dollar budget, which you guys did pass a motion on to use some funds last month. It really should be just for outreach and bringing awareness to your board meetings.
Okay. Harris, I recognize you at this time.
Yes, thank you. You know what I think would be helpful is you know, we're gonna be doing our photo of our board. And if we had a nice poster showing the members of the board, but also the the meeting dates of the the board meetings and then also the ability for the the people within our district to to also come on in terms of is it physically or virtually to join the meetings? And then if we put like, I think, you know, a lot of the attendees and the people who are reporting, whether it's from the HPD, HFD, the Board of Water Supply and all our our political leaders, our representatives from the state and city. I think sharing with them the the just the base core of the agenda. And then if we had a had these posters and then we partner with the businesses within our district, restaurants and so forth, that we can, we can, they will allow us to post it, then we can generate that interest and outreach so that they're aware of what what the neighborhood board, who's on a neighborhood board and what we're talking about. And then also the the ability for them to listen to and have access to the 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 wonderful discussion that we have that goes on and the reports that are put together.
Harris, thank you very much for that. So I'm hearing interest overall in like flyers or physical advertisement seems to be where we're the most at, for something like a flyer or like a banner. To kind of clarify, if we do have a banner, are we interested in doing, as Harris suggests, making our own additional banner with our current board member photo on it? Is that something of broader interest among the board? Seeing a few nods.
If you guys want, Chair, I can show some of the other boards, like what they have.
Sure, that'd be very helpful. Thank you. And if you want to close to close out on some sort of thought, maybe a limited budget allocation. We don't have to figure out all eight hundred and fifty or so dollars. We want to maybe put aside two or three hundred for some flyers for the next few months. I think that's an acceptable mid-step too, if we want to, so inclined. Go ahead, Logan.
Can everyone see my screen right now? So I always use this example. This is like the Kailua Neighborhood Board. This is their banner that they use during their, when they participate in the in a Christmas parade every year. And then scroll through. Not every board has a picture up, but a lot of these like this. Yeah, so having like a banner is definitely something that like, you know, just something that you guys can like hang up in the community or like on like a high traffic area, just so that way gets eyes on, right? Like, I know that earlier this month at my Palolo Neighborhood Board meeting, that's pretty much what they're deciding to do. They just got they broke out like their old banners and they're planning on putting them at points of like high interest or high traffic in the community.
Okay, very good. All right. Is there any sort of motion for allocating some portion of the budget towards a mix of banners and flyers for businesses or some sort of maybe like physical print average, not print advertisement? What's a good category? What encompasses both banners and flyers? Maybe we need to make two separate allocations?
You can make one allocation or both.
Okay, do you want to make the motion?
I move that we have some publicity event.
Oh, publicity event?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can hang out the banner or we can march around them. I don't know.
Well, I think we're still waiting for Logan to be able to let us know if we would be able to do some sort of.
And that twenty people. They're already bringing the dish. We can do okay.
That's fair enough. I said that's a motion. That's fair enough. I said, that's a motion for, if this, do you wanna put a dollar sign on the order?
How about two hundred dollars? Now, that'll get the banner, or a hot dog.
Well, is this a budget for an event?
You know what it is? Do we, we, we budget for some kind of publicity event?
Uh, just if I could add, Chair, um, if we're not sure what we're exactly motioning for, I would, I wouldn't recommend making a motion to come up with something and allocate funds. If you guys have something concrete that I can take to the office like tomorrow, then we can get something pretty much rolling immediately, right? So I would, I would probably recommend against, um, an open-ended, uh, motion for allocation funds.
Well, still, we do have a motion on the table, so I wanna see if there is a second. Okay, hearing no second, uh, motion fails. Um, how do we wanna proceed? Um, it's about seven fifty-four, how do we wanna move forward as a board? I know this is a new exercise we're doing. How do we wanna move forward with coming up with a budget? We, we, we did receive a budget, uh, recommendation from our treasurer. It sounds like there wasn't a lot of support for as written. At least it was a great conversation starter, I'd say. Uh, how do we wanna proceed with determining our budget? Any recommendations? Uh, Harris, you're recognized at this time.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that, uh, uh, we bring, uh, do us, um, I guess, uh, um, a study in terms of the cost in terms of doing a outreach flyer that would, uh, recognize the board members and the meeting dates and information of how or where, um, people could come to. And these flyers would be maybe, uh, almost like ledger size and we can get a price, uh, on having, you know, maybe just a, a few hundred that we could have printed. That would be nicely, um, professionally done and then, um, uh, provide that proposal at the next meeting for, uh, for review, uh, comments and approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Chuck seconds. Um, so this would be a motion for a proposal. I intend to put in most of the, the footwork for that. I recently contacted printers for the previous and designers for the previous item, so I should be able to take that one on. Is there any discussion about this proposal on this motion? Hearing none, um, I'm gonna seek unanimous consent. Is anyone abstaining or voting no? Hearing none, the motion passes. Uh, I know Thomas had your hand up as well. Did you have anything to add to this conversation?
So I was going to move for the quotes, which I think we've just done. Um, since we're just gathering information at this point, it might make sense to gather information on some other ideas that we've discussed. Um, I would like to motion that we get a quote for the social media advertisements, how much that might cost and what we can expect in return. Uh, that's my, that's my motion.
Banner, wire. Okay, uh, we have a second, motion with a second, any discussion? Uh, so my understanding is between these two motions. Oh, so I go ahead and what was that? No, okay. Um, between these two motions, we would be looking at budget for banners, flyers and social media advertisement.
So, and.
Right, Thomas?
I was gonna say, Chair, if I may, uh, the, I'm just putting in this motion to make sure that we can get quotes on that option as well. Uh, when it comes down to making this decision at the next meeting, we don't have to choose that, but I just wanna make sure that we have all of the information available on all of the options.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, um, let's seek unanimous consent. Anyone abstaining or opposed? Hearing none, uh, motion passes. Um, thank you very much for the robust discussion on the budget. Uh, I think we're ready to move on in the agenda. Uh, next item on the agenda is committees. Are there any upcoming committee meetings? Hearing none, is there any movement or interest in establishment of additional committees? Uh, the next item on the agenda was just in case, um, we can allocate additional chairs for committees at this time. Any discussion on this? Uh, Logan, please go ahead.
Sorry, could I actually ask a clarifying question? I, I wasn't, uh, sure reviewing the video. Did you step down as the co-chair of the homelessness committee, Richard, last month?
Uh, yes, I did, I did. I, I just don't have the time for that right now.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Okay. I think I misplaced an important item, here we go. Now, we don't have any other, um, direction. All right, the next item on the agenda was membership. Uh, was anyone interested in joining our reform, uh, revision committee?
Reorganization.
Reorganization or our homelessness committees and the interest? Well, we did get one online. Danielle Dupre, I'm sure I'm butchering the pronunciation, I do deeply apologize, is interested in, um, and I think this is more of a note than a signing up, so never mind that addition. Um, we'll move on then to the next agenda item, approval of the regular meeting minutes for June fifteenth. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Logan?
Uh, just clarifying now on the motion, uh, approve as written. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Here, no discussion.
Provide that for, and oil.
Yeah. Which we're having in our discussion now, but I don't think we have any. All right, hearing, uh, no discussion or need for revisal, uh, the motion, I'm gonna seek unanimous consent. Anyone opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, we have our minutes. Uh, next up, approval of the regular meeting minutes, written summary for video record, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve, although I guess I have a question. What, it's written summary for the video record as opposed to the meeting minutes?
Uh, go ahead, Logan.
Yeah, yeah, hi Nathan, this is Logan again. Uh, yeah, so I explained this at a previous meeting, but I, I don't mind, uh, changing it. It's, it's a little weird, I know, cuz I know it's been minutes forever, but, um, the written summary for video record is essentially the same thing. If you get a chance to review your minutes, you'll see that basically it's just, uh, incorporating a YouTube video element. Um, I record every meeting and basically, uh, the NCO, we're trying to increase the production value, if you will, the meetings to where they can, uh, exist on their own. And so basically, uh, we're utilizing a YouTube page and we're using that heavily when we're writing and drafting our minutes, um, from here on out. So it's essentially the same thing. Uh, you can just think of them as, as minutes. Um, if Chair Ross wants to put them on the agenda as minutes, I, I know what he'll mean. Uh, I just wrote it just because there is a, that slight distinction, but it's, it's more or less the same thing.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I, a motion to approve.
That's probably.
Oh, we have a motion. Um, so is there a second? I think you go a little unsure, Logan. Uh, no second for approval of the video record. Okay, second. All right, discussion, you're recognized.
We don't need to have. We don't need to have.
Fair point, maybe, uh, video. Okay, we'll call a minute. We'll consider that. I'll take it on advice and I'll talk to Logan about it. Um, is anyone abstaining or any further discussions on the meeting, Rich and Summer?
Uh, Chair, this Richard.
Richard, please go ahead.
Uh, Logan, I, I'm confused. So video minutes, does that mean like the whole meeting is taped like tonight? Will be available online and that's our minutes?
Yeah, hey, Richard. So, um, again, I don't know if you guys have gotten a chance to look at the, uh, the, the minutes that, that were submitted, but it's the same thing from the July minutes that came out that you guys approved and it's the same thing with August and going forward. The, uh, written summary for video record, I am recording right now. But the YouTube element is just in addition to the minutes. So basically it's just, it's just adding on to the minutes, if that makes sense. It's it's not dr, it's, it's changing it in the way that it's, it's more or less just adding to it. If you, if you looked, if you look at the minutes, I mean, it includes timestamps. It includes, um, it's, it's more or less the same thing, yeah.
So let me understand, so if I was gold on YouTube, I would punch up our meeting and I would see the meeting in full?
Yes, if, if you look at the minutes at the, I mean, it's the top, I mean, it's the top line is the YouTube link to the meeting, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're all available online for viewing. Um, I try to get them posted, uh, usually a couple of days after, um, but usually it'll, it won't be any longer than a week at the most.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
All right, motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Means that we don't have a video sometime, that we don't get any minutes?
I mean, there, there will always be a video, cuz the way you guys have your meetings set up is where they're virtual right now, or hybrid, I should say. Um, I, I basically am always, um, gonna be recording it because, yeah, we need
Yeah.
to, cuz in or, even in order for me to do the regular minutes, I would still need the online component, right?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Thomas Baldwin, you're recognized.
Uh, actually, just to build on, on that too, my understanding with the law is that for some reason, if there isn't a video, let's just say there isn't, if we have, if you don't have Logan or a video gets corrupted, I'm pretty sure in the law, it's either that record of the video or minutes. So if we didn't have a video, my understanding is we would get minutes. Is, am I, am I correct there, uh, Logan?
Yeah, absolutely. So if, for whatever reason, um, like you said, if my video, uh, file becomes corrupted or um, I'm not able to produce something that is of, uh, basically where it's able to be presented out to the public, then yeah, I would just draft, uh, the old style minutes, just because, um, the YouTube wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't be feasible to put out some bad product, basically.
All right, so we have a motion in the second, had discussion. Anyone opposed or abstaining on adopting the written summary for the video record? Hearing none, the motion passes. Uh, moving on to the next agenda item. It is finding a, uh, time for our group picture. I'm going to share my screen, moments before my computer does. Let's okay, here we go. So according to these responses, the by far most supported time is Thursday, January eighteen. So that's our January meeting, so I intend to put this on the agenda item as the second item right after our first responders. Uh, ideally Logan, I don't, that's, I can put it on the agenda, but we can just take the picture before the meeting too, right?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I mean, you guys, I would honestly say you don't need any kind of action on this. I mean, you guys could take a picture after each meeting if you wanted, right? But what I would do is more of an announcement. I would just say like the one that we're gonna be submitting to the NCO for posting on the website for use in any future board endeavors, I would say like, make, make sure you're here. And, um, and just one other additional point, if I can, um, next month, we are gonna be, um, I don't have a set date yet, but I'm pretty sure that next month, I'm hoping in, in advance of your guys' November meeting, that we'll actually have those, uh, board member polo shirts for you guys.
Right.
And, uh, so that, I mean, whether you guys want it or not, that I think that would be great for the picture if you guys kinda had a, you know, almost like a uniform, uh, so to speak. And, uh, so yeah, anytime after January sounds fine, but I mean, I would just put it on the announcements.
Okay, we'll include it into the announcements, uh, and I'm just gonna say now, uh, five fifty PM. Uh, would anyone have trouble coming ten minutes early for this one meeting, uh, in person in order for us to get a group photo? Do we foresee any challenges there? I don't, I can't see if anyone's hand is raised.
All right, move.
No hands up.
Okay, great. Well, that's the plan. Okay. Uh, that's the end of our board business. Uh, finally, announcements, regular meeting. The next meeting of our board is scheduled for Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six PM at McKeekey District Park and online via web X. Also be looking for a time, one to two weeks prior for a special meeting related to game rooms and the legislation moving forward at the council level. Broadcast of this meeting can be viewed on a level focus forty-nine at nine PM on the first Friday of the month and again on the first and third Sunday at three PM. For social media, you can follow us at facebook.com slash McKeekey and B and B as in the letters for initials standing for Neighborhood Board. Finally, archive, you can see reference, uh, hangouts and reference materials on our Google Drive. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Move, motion, uh, okay, uh, any, anyone opposed? Hearing none, uh, we are adjourned.
For hosting.
Good night, everyone.
All right, everyone.